Hey, good morning, ladies and gentlemen and council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Swagard and Mr. Skarsen are on holidays, so they won't be here today. I pray safety on their travels. Just wondering if there's any, anything to add to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of the council, administration is recommending several additions and one deletion. To start with, we would like to add 9.33 under Infrastructure Services, so 9.33, the 2024 Desk Control Program for council's information. Under 9.34, the Sale of Waste Aggregate. We'd like to create 9.4 Chief Administrative Officer, and under that would be 9.4.1, the MD's Senior Transportation Grant Program. And 9.4.2, the Regional Sports Tourism Committee 2016 Winter Games. We would also like to delete from closed session the Riverhurst Gravel Pit under FOIP Section 16 and 24. And we'd like to add to closed session 12.2 Advice from Officials under FOIP 24. So I'll just run over that again. 9.3324, 2024 Desk Control Program, 9.3.4 The Sale of Waste Aggregate. Under Chief Administrative Officer, which would be 9.4, we'd add 9.4.1 The MD's Senior Transportation Grant Program, 9.4.2 Regional Sports Tourism Committee 2016 Winter Games. Delete under Closed Session 12.1 and add 12.2 Advice from Officials under FOIP 24. Clear as mud?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Any other? Yes, Counselor Slipchak?
Yeah, I'd like to add Aurora Borealis Industrial Park Infrastructure. Have a discussion on that.
Where would we like to put that, Mr. Hogan?
I would suggest that would be 9.3.5 under Infrastructure Services.
Any other additions or deletions? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Thank you, Counselor Cravieak, for making a motion of the amendment of the agenda. They're up there. Okay, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. I'm looking for the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting of council, June 25, 2024. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making that motion. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Okay, we're gonna go on to 7, 7.1.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Administration has received and is presenting a development application 2024-D-167, in which the applicant is applying for a new work camp at the Sanovis Foster Creek site. The property is located in Ward 6, north of the Sanovis existing accommodation site. Adjacent work camps are the Bear's Den and the Kodiak Den. Consideration is that the applicant would like to place an industrial work camp with 532 beds, kitchen dining facility, rec mudroom, and on a former work camp site. Sanovis disposition for the work camp is valid until 2027 and will be automatically renewed in 2026. The applicant would like this work camp development permit to be valid for a five-year period until 2029. The land use bylaw requires written authorization from the registered owners to make application for developments, as their approval is until 2027. We are recommending approval until 2027. Sanovis is accredited in all applicable safety codes and will be responsible for the administration of the required service permits. Adjacent landowner letters were not sent out, as there are no adjacent landowners. The recommendation for development permit application number 2024-D-167 is approve the request for a work camp as discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 66, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. Number 1, applicable building, electrical, plumbing, gas, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. And number 2, shall be operated as per the provincial approvals. And number 3, the camp is approved until November 5, 2027, at which time the new applicant, or pardon me, the new permit is required or reclamation shall be undertaken. Thank you.
I don't know if I said good morning, but good morning. So you get it twice, yeah. Counselor Fadiev?
Hi. So they're looking for a permit until 2029, you said?
The, they have a disposition that's being placed for a five-year period until 2029. However, we want to make sure that there is a renewal of that actual application in '27, so we are only giving them the permit until '27, until such time they can show us that they do have the extension in place, so that we're not overlapping in timelines.
Awesome, okay. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion for option 1.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making the motion. The council approves development permit application number 2024-D-167 for a work camp within southwest 1374 west of the 4th Meridian and southeast 1474 west of the 4th Meridian as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 66, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw within the following conditions, 1 through 3. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to 9.2 and 9.21.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
At the regular meeting of council on June the 11th, 2024, delegation-
Excuse me, could you turn your mic on, please?
Hear me now? Perfect. At the regular meeting of the council on June the 11th, 2024, a delegation was made to council by the Cold Lake First Nations, Rick Janviev, Treaty 1 to 11, gathering committee member, and Emma Plant, Treaty 1 to 11, gathering event coordinator, providing information on and requesting support for the Treaties 1 to 11, August to 2024 gathering event. Council directed administration to bring the request back to a future meeting of council for consideration. The Treaty 1 to 11 gathering event takes place from August 26 to the 30th at the Cold Lake First Nations English Bay Treaty Grounds near Cold Lake, Alberta. It is a momentous event held in Alberta each year with over 3,000 attendees. The gathering event will feature a series of engaging activities, traditional ceremonies, and discussions that highlight the rich heritage of the participating nations. The Gathering Event Committee is requesting sponsorship to help cover the costs associated with the organizing this significant gathering. A simple delegation request, a similar delegation request was made by the city of Cold Lake, or to the city of Cold Lake, where they committed to a $10,000 sponsorship, sponsorships, excuse me. Attached for council's review is Appendix A, Treaties 1 to 11 Gathering Sponsorship Letter; Appendix B, Treaty 1 to 11 Gathering Tentative Agenda; Appendix C is the 2024 Sponsorship Level Options and Commitment Form; Appendix D is Policy C-2A.003 Donation, Sponsorship, and Recognition Policy. Reference to the strategic plan, Goal 1, Building a Prosperous and Sustainable Community. Cost and source of funding, the cost, sponsorship opportunities range from $1,000 to $50,000. 2024 Operating Budget Source of Funding Options is Community Action Grant, Donation, Sponsorship, and Recognition Policy Budget. Community Services Department, approximately $50,000 is remaining in that balance. The applicant will be notified in writing of council's decision, and administration is recommending an action that council approves the contribution in the amount of $2,000 as per the Policy C-2A.003 Donation, Sponsorship, and Recognition Policy towards the Treaties 1 to 11 gathering event to be held August 26 to the 30th, 2024, as requested by the Cold Lake First Nations, to be funded from the 2024 Operating Budget. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So in their presentation, they also mentioned that their First Nations were like, were funding it as well, and they were getting lots of donations for $500. Was that correct? Did I write my notes right? Remember that at all?
Through the reef, correct.
Right, okay.
Sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick?
Yeah, I just thought the treaties are all, it's all federal, so I thought maybe the funding should be federal for that. So I'm gonna make motion number 3, accept it as information.
All right, that's a motion that you're, okay. I'll wait till that comes up on the screen. All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion. The council accepts the requests by Cold Lake First Nations for support of the Treaties 1 through 11 gathering event to be held August 26 to the 30th, 2024 as information. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Slipchak?
Yeah, I would've liked to have seen us make a contribution to this instead of taking it as information. There's gonna be a lot of people, a lot of nations coming from all the way from the east and west, and that would really promote our area.
Yeah, I have to agree with you. I'd like to see us give a little bit of something as well. So, any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, there's gonna be lots of infill with people coming through, and not all the hotels are gonna be able to accommodate, so it's gonna be some definite overflow to our campsites and towards the campsite that are, you know, that are run privately as well. And I think some sort of sponsorship would be definitely adequate.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's defeated. Someone else like to make another motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, I believe we should increase this a bit, this funding, because it's gonna, it's a big promotion for our area, and I know our campsites will benefit from it. But I'd like to discuss what fellow council's thoughts are on it before I go forward with an amount.
Yes, Counselor Fadiev?
I think, I think the 2,000, that administration is, that's more than, you know, than enough. I mean, it's never enough, so don't get me wrong. But when their, their nations are only supporting them with $500, right? You gotta remember, this is their event, not ours. And, you know, I think their, their own nation should be supporting them a little bit more. And I think if there's a shortage, it should be based on them, and we are, we are helping out based on the grant, our grant policies that we have, and I think 2,000 is, is the right number.
Any other discussion or comments? It's your motion, though, Counselor Slipchak.
I'll make the motion that we approve the option 1, the 2,000.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making the motion. That council approves the contribution in the amount of 2,000 as per Policy C-2A.003 Donation, Sponsorship, and donation policy towards the Treaty 1 through 11 gathering event to be held August 26 to the 30th, 2024, as requested by Cold Lake First Nations, to be funded from the 2,024 Operating Budget. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Good morning, council.
Morning, Esther.
So I have for you today our municipal scholarship program policy. Council recently reviewed a new draft municipal scholarship program policy that would support the pursuit by MD residents of post-secondary education in veterinary and medicine and the healthcare field. Council then directed administration to bring back a bit of additional information on other similar scholarship programs available in this area of study and to make a few amendments to the draft policy. This scholarship program was deemed important, given the significant shortage of medical professionals in both human and veterinary and medicine in rural Alberta. The MD currently supports the pursuit of post-secondary education by rural residents through both the Rural Municipalities of Alberta's annual scholarship program, as well as the scholarship programs at Portage College through the sponsorship and attendance of annual fundraising events. With further research, administration has found multiple scholarship programs for these areas of study through involved post-secondary institutions. We also found return to local area criteria-based scholarships provided by other municipalities for their residents, including Saddle Hills County and Big Lakes County for veterinary and medicine, as well through the Northern Alberta Development Council for both veterinary and medicine and healthcare fields. The following are three approach options for council's consideration, with varying levels of commitment from the applicant to return to the region, and varying levels of annual financial commitment by the MD. The first option is a $2,000 scholarship, recommending three be available per year. This option, we would adopt proposed draft policy C-3C.021, with a preference for applicants demonstrating a return to the area after completion of their program. Second option is a $7,000, $10,000, and $14,000 scholarship for three different areas. We would amend Policy C-3C.021 to require the successful applicants to commit to a similar NADC one-year agreement to practice in the region upon completion of their programs. We would have a maximum of three scholarships per year, one per the area, similar to the NADC three bursaries. And those three values, as you'll see in Appendix A, is dependent on which field of study it's in. And the third option is to direct administration to, to not move forward with our policy, and instead to register for the NADC Bursary Partnership Program. This is the same level of commitment as Level 2, or Option 2. However, NADC manages this program. Further, they match the dollars that the municipality provides to a maximum. So this option would see the bursary to the applicant doubling in award value. Attached for council's consideration in Appendix A is the three bursary programs for the three different areas. Those three study areas include medical and dentistry student bursary, a veterinarian student bursary, and a nurse practitioner bursary. So these all are existing right now. And I chose to present it the way I did in Appendix A to show that they are very similar. The only thing really modifying is the, is the dollar amounts. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty much each one of them is pretty similar to the other. Appendix B shows our draft policy with the amendments that were requested by council previously, which is moving up the date of the submissions from June to May, and to, to add in the preference for applicants to come back to the area. However, given the smaller value of that option, it's not a commitment, it's just a, it's just a verbal, it's not a, you must come back, it's a, show us that you have a wish to come back. And then Appendix C is a copy of the NADC Bursary Partnership Program information, should we choose to go down that route of just registering through NADC or in applying. We actually have to apply for that option. Reference to our strategic plan is Goal Number 3, to promote community development. Cost and source of funding, if we follow Option 1, our maximum annual commitment would be $6,000 per year. Option 2 or 3, our potential maximum would be $31,000 per year. Our source of funding is, this would be included in the 2025 Operating Budget. And this, should council choose to go with any of these options, we would be doing this starting in 2025. Communication strategy, the chosen scholarship program approach will be promoted and advertised through the MD's website and social media, and communicated to local schools in our school districts. Administration's recommended action is that council adopts the new policy number C-3C.021, municipal scholarship program policy as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinavell.
Thank you.
Any, yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I just have some comments in regards to, it only, it only encompasses the medical field, regards being nursing or veterinarian or whatever else. I, it's, it's, I don't, I don't think no matter how much money we throw at it, I think it'd be hard to keep people here. This is not a MD problem, this is a problems problem. This is a, this is a Canada problem. We have a problem with, you know, retaining all those people to begin with. You know, definitely would like to see some sort of trades involved in this, because we do have a lack of people that are, you know, that are, that get their trades and don't come back here. And, and, you know, having been in council here and then seeing the people, or the lack of people from here regards to planning or anything like that, and it's, you know, I think we should encompass that as well as professional administrators, somebody that is here, that come back. I mean, we're looking at our, at our assessment part of it as well. We got one person retiring and one person that's just here, and we're lucky that the kid is from here, and he likes being home, and he's more likely gonna stay. But how do we attract those kids to stay? And I think that's important to look at. I think we should add a few more, I guess-
Fields of study?
Fields of study to that, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Any other discussion or? Lot of thought going on here.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. I guess the question for clarity for administration, if we were to be directed to come back with other fields of study, a little bit of direction as to what fields we're talking about, we're talking about plumbers, electricians, gas fitters, are we talking about power engineers?
Et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so just, just some clarity from council, if you decide that you want, our direction from council previously was to focus on veterinary and healthcare.
Yeah.
If council wants to expand that, absolutely, it's council's purview to do that. But just some delineation as to what areas you would like us to come back with, an amended or revised draft to speak to.
Well, just from people talking to myself all the time, nobody ever comes up to you and asks you about a trade shortage, or, we all know there is shortages and everything, but they all always talk about doctors, nurses, and stuff like that, always. It's like, almost 90% of the time, so that's just, yeah.
Oh, for sure, I totally understand that part of it, but we're always, you know, we've been hearing that for forever. And if you go to Saskatchewan, it's the same problem. We go to-
Oh, everywhere.
Anywhere, right? And it's a, it's a problem with, with Canada and how we're, how we're dealing with it. So it's a definitely, the feds could do a better job with it. But again, I, I mean, it's just, if this fills up, you know, we can maybe do, but I think trades are important as well for us.
I, I agree. Well, why don't we, why don't we deal with what we told them to deal with, and then why don't we maybe try to come up with something for trades and other, why don't we in the-
Like a second one?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that's, it's a great idea that you brought up, but let's discuss it. This is what we told administration to look at, because we get a lot, you know, you get a lot of people asking for this. So let's go with this for today, and then let's task our guys to come up with something for trades and stuff. What do you guys think of that?
Yeah, I think that's better, because I think this, we're gonna make it too complex here, and too many people, it's gonna add the workload for going through all these applications then. This wears veterinary, nursing, doctors, that's, they're giving to the whole community, like, they're helping the whole community in that area, like, you know, servicing, like, for healthcare, because we're all touched by somebody that needs medical assistance or, and would, it also encourages agriculture. So I'd say I'd like to make a motion for option 1, and then we look at going forward with another, maybe second, for secondary, other education.
Okay, Counselor Cravieak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I think this is a good start myself, but I also think there should be a commitment X number of years, like, three years, for example, or something, not just if you wish to come back, because they may not come back. So I think we should have a commitment of whatever number of years we decide, three years, whatever. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor-
Yeah, and I just kinda wanna just add on, just another comment to how it affects everybody. You're saying that medical end of it does affect, I mean, of course it affects everybody. I mean, I just had a mishap, and, and, you know, it's, if I wanna go with the, you know, with the private way, I can, I can get it done within a week. But if I wanted to wait for the system to get, to get looked at, well, I have to wait a month and a half. There is, that's, it's, it is a system problem, and I think we gotta deal with that. This is definitely gonna help getting those people here, but I think on the administration side and the trade side, it does affect everybody. When we don't have an inspector that can expect a permit, how is that not gonna affect everybody? When we gotta bring in people from Edmonton and Calgary to do those jobs, and they stick here for three months to six months, and they, you know, they move away. That's a, it's a cost on, on everybody, so, but yeah, thanks for the discussion, and I definitely support this program and others as well, so.
Any, any other discussion, gentlemen?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, Mr. Hogan?
I'm giving it some thought. I would suggest that council, if council wants to go down that road, I would suggest a separate policy. These policies are funded through, through council's budget on an annual basis, and let's say council put, for lack of a better number, and I don't know what the number would be at this point, but let's say $50,000 into this policy. You would have people going off to university, become doctors, competing in the same policy for people who are gonna become power engineers. And I think that would, I think that would put council in a, in a really weird position. I think it would put the applicants in an awkward position. I think we should have a separate funding stream for that, that council could look at, at budget on an annual basis. And so I have the medical veterinarian on one side, and your, and your trades and others through a separate policy.
Yeah.
That could be funded either the same or differently, but then they'd be, power engineers would be competing against power engineers, as opposed to a doctoral candidate competing against a power engineer candidate.
I think that's what we're thinking as well. Counselor Slipchak, which, which motion did you make? Option 1, so option 1 is for $6,000, is that correct?
Through the reef, yes, it would be a $2,000 scholarship with three available per year, is the way it's worded currently. If we do wanna increase the commitment level of, of a stronger commitment to return to the area, then we should, we should strengthen up the wording in the draft policy. I would suggest under section, section of the policy, Section 5B, where it currently states that preference will be given to applicants expressing a commitment to return and practice to their area of study in the MD region. to return and practice to their area of study in the MD region. Would you like to put a timeline in there, like a, a one-year commitment, a two-year commitment? And just, just for comparison purposes, under the NADC bursaries, each of those three options for the 14,000, the 7,000 and the 10,000, those commitments come with a one-year commitment to come back to the area.
So pretty hard for us to ask for a three-year commitment. No one's gonna jump on that for $2,000 is what you're saying? Yeah.
It, it's not as, it's not comparable, don't to what's currently out there.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Crick, please.
We could, so somebody could apply essentially like if it's a six-year program, they could get 2,000 each year for six years through this policy that we're, that the motion's on. So we could ask for a one-year service for each year they receive the $2,000 grant or they pay it back.
Through the Reeve, that is correct. And actually, that is the way that NADC does it as well. If they apply, they can apply multiple years, but each year that they receive it is another year commitment.
Okay. You guys good with that? Right on. Any other discussion, gentlemen? All right, thank you, Counselor Slipchak for making this motion that council adopts new policy number three dash, sorry, number C dash three C zero two one municipal scholarship program policy as presented. Any discussion? Yeah?
Mr. Chair, sorry, it's just the policy is not as presented. So I'm just trying to clarify with Ms. Kimbough what the revision to the policy is supposed to be.
Okay, let's just rewrite it then. Sorry about that, I'm jumping the gun. Our first thing's at nine thirty, correct? Public hearing?
Through the Reeve, did we want to review the value if we're asking for this commitment at all? Or do we wanna keep it at a $2,000 scholarship?
Gentlemen?
I think we can keep it a $2,000 scholarship is my thought. It's, if they want, it's still a help, gonna help somebody. $2,000 to a student is a fair bit of money. And I realize that it's not a lot in, for how much it costs to go to that medical school. And if they decide they wanna work somewhere else or, you know, they get married and they have to move somewhere else to be with their, with their spouse, then they can pay that back. So it's, it's an incentive to come here. It's, it's kind of a, we're helping them out, but it's not, their feet aren't tied 100% to if they have to move for their own life.
So what you're saying is they gotta come here and get married and stay here?
Ideally, yes.
All right. It looks like we're sticking with that?
Sounds good.
Did they rewrite the? Okay. Well, I gotta read more now. All right. Thank you, Counselor Slipchak, once again for making this motion that council adopts new policy number C three C zero two one, municipal scholarship programs policy with revisions to section five B indicated on the requirements for a one-year commitment from the recipient to return to the region following a completion of their program for each year funding is awarded. Any discussion? Do you understand that?
Should we have an error like the recipient to return to the region, follow their field of, that they're taking? Or, because?
Through the Reeve, yes, that's, that's the message behind indicating a requirement for a one-year commitment from the recipient to return to the region following the completion of their program. So yeah, we're asking for a one-year commitment per year they receive the scholarship to come back.
But it's not stipulating that they have to work in their field. They could just come here for one year.
That is true.
You wanna change that? It's your motion?
Yeah, I think we should fix that up there too, that practice in their field.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Hogan, should we shut this down to start the public hearing or should we just finish this? What do you think?
I think we're, I think we're probably almost done.
Okay.
I'll leave it to council, but I think we're probably okay.
Because the, the actual policy does capture what Mrs. Slipchak was saying. So under five B studies, applicants expressing commitment to return and practice their area of study.
Yeah. Good catch there, Counselor Fedeav. You're okay with that, Mr.?
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
It's not showing up on my screen, but I'm in favor of it.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, carried. All right, thank you. We're gonna take a three-minute break here and then we're gonna go into the public hearings for bylaw L U five. Welcome back. We're going into public hearings. I need a motion to go into public hearing. Thank you, Counselor Fedeav, for making the motion that the public hearing for item four point one be open at nine forty-five. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Before we begin with this public hearing for bylaw number LU five seven nine amending bylaw, sorry, amending L U B bylaw, I would like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, also the applicant, followed by questions of administration from council. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Administration as applicant will then be provided opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in opposition of the, their application, followed by the questions of the applicant from council only on information provided during the rebuttal. I guess I supposed to do the motion now, but I did it backwards, but we're good to go. All right, good morning.
Good morning. This application is considered the redistricting of lot one, block one, plan eight six two zero eight one four, part of southeast sixteen sixty-two one, west the fourth Meridian, within the hamlet of Cherry Grove. The proposed application would redistrict the property from Hamlet Single Family Residential District HR one to Hamlet General District, District HG. The MD of Bonneville administration is proposing the rezoning of the subject parcel based on a previously submitted application. The current area for lot one, block one, plan eight six two zero eight one four is approximately 4.99 acres and land use bylaw LU five seven nine was given first reading at the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Thank you. Sorry, I shouldn't be drinking water there. Any questions, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We also have no written submissions that have provided for the agenda package. All right, at this time, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor. For the second time, I'm asking if anyone is wishing to speak in favor of this bylaw. And for the third and final time, I'm wishing, I'm asking if anyone's wishing to speak on this bylaw. Okay, seeing none, at this time. I'm gonna ask if anyone wishes to speak against this bylaw, number eighteen sixty-eight. For the second time, I'm gonna wish if there's anyone wishing to speak against bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. And for the third and final time, I'm wishing, I'm asking if anyone's wishing to speak against bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. Okay, seeing none. Back to administration.
That will be all, thank you.
All right, looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Thank you, Counselor Fedeav, for making the motion that the public hearing for item four point one be closed at nine forty-nine AM. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay. That's carried. I think I made a, made a mistake while I was, I was reading the wrong bylaw number, wasn't I? Is that gonna be a, do we need to go back and change that? Steph?
Um, I suppose it couldn't hurt to do one more. I can check with our, our planning department. As far as I know, there's no one in attendance for that bylaw public hearing, but I can confirm before we move on if you'd like.
Okay, can you confirm that? The next public hearing coming up is actually the eighteen sixty-eight. I apologize to everyone that I got it. Uh, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess and we got a couple of letters that came in and we're gonna go read them in the back. And then we can square that away because it was LU five seven nine. I apologize, I had my, my papers mixed up here. So we're gonna take a ten-minute break to read the. All right, welcome back. I have to apologize to everybody. I really messed up the first one, so I'm gonna do better on this one. Before we begin with the public hearing for bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight Moose Lake Area Structure Plan ASP, I would like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, also the applicant, followed by questions of administration from council. We will then call upon the members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Administration as applicant will then be provided with opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in the opposition of their applicant, followed by questions only on information, sorry, information provided during the rebut, rebuttal. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Thank you, Counselor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making the motion that public hearing for item four point two be opened at ten oh two AM. Any discussion on this? I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Administration? Who's presenting? Yeah, welcome. Morning.
Good morning. Could you turn your mic on, please?
Good morning, thank you, Reven Council.
Morning.
So we wanna provide a bit of an overview of the area structure plan for Moose Lake that has been presented to you for your consideration. So just as a general update, this, the area structure plans are a bit more of a detailed direction of a focused plan area. So we have gone through a, a series of, of reviews of all of the planning and development documents that the MD has. Part of that is to look through and, and update the overall changes that have happened in the plan area since its initial adoption. But if you'll also recall that the MD has, has completed a full review and, and rewrite of the municipal development plan, which is the overarching document that guides all of these subsequent area structure plans. So we needed to make sure that as we went through, not only to look at the existing, the changes to the context of the plan area, but also changes to the overall policy direction that the new municipal development plan is put forward. So as an overall summary of the purpose of the plan, ultimately, this has to have consistency with any higher order plans and that includes any authority provided through the province and the municipal government act. So any of the changes that were created to the area structure plan had to ensure that they were conforming with all other statutory documents that the MD has either adopted or that the province has put in place as overarching regulation for the MD to follow. Overall, some of the key objectives of the plan were to look at reduction of, of land use conflicts between different types of uses, making sure that there are orderly development patterns in areas that are suitable for development, creating more clarity around development decisions and relationships to the other policies that the MD has and looking at fiscally sound development as part of the overall direction that the municipal development plan has provided. As part of the process, the MD engaged with the, the broader community for discussion out in the plan area. Some of the key themes that were brought forward from the community, first and foremost, preservation of the natural areas and ensuring protection of the lake, balance between any type of recreation use and access with the lake health, exploring expansion of commercial opportunities to balance out some of the, the growth that is residential focused and keeping the area walkable and connected to not only the lake, but within the, the neighborhoods themselves. The general overall update and some of the context and how we make connections to the municipal development plan directions. One of the focuses in the, within the MDP were a, a preservation and protection of environmentally significant areas. So the map shown here is, is what we've put forward in the area structure plan. All of the purple shaded areas illustrate where these environmentally sensitive areas are in adjacent to Moose Lake, largely focused at the inlets to the lake. So ensuring that all of these areas are brought forward as part of any consideration of new growth or development. Uh, the next map was another illustration and articulation of the connection to the municipal development plan and the focus on protection of agricultural areas. So there are agriculture operations in the area, but the, while some pockets of, of soils are classified as fair, the majority of the lands are either poor to very poor from an agricultural perspective. So this is, is part of the, the additional policy area that, that flows from the municipal development plan priorities to ensure that agricultural context is, is provided within all of our sub-area plans. And then looking at the existing land use, there is a, a large contingent of the land surrounding the lake, the green hatched area that is crown land, that does not have, or the plans, the area structure plan or the municipal development plan does not have any jurisdiction over, over the crown lands. There has been a, an expansion of residential development on the non-crown lands in the eastern part of the plan area that has changed, the, the majority of the context has changed since the original adoption of the plan is that development area there on the east side of the lake. The plan was originally created in nineteen eighty. It was updated in nineteen eighty-five and it has not changed since nineteen eighty-five. So there's been considerable growth since then. The vast majority of that has been residential and the vast majority of the residential has been permanent households. So as that residential growth has continued to expand through the plan and some of the direction, uh, uh, direction areas of the, the new updated plan, looking at opportunities for non-residential development to balance some of that. But the, the priority and the main objective of the plan and coming both from the community, but also in looking at the change to the context, is protection of the watershed and ensuring that any development that we, there is any proposed development is looking at how the, our balance. the, are balancing any impacts on the water quality in the lake itself. Part of the future vision builds from not only the original, uh, area structure plan, but also the direction that has been provided in the updates to the municipal development plan. The key aspirations for the area are protecting the long-term health of the lake, making sure that any development is compatible with not only the environment and the environmental features of the area, but also the existing uses that are already there. So as part of the reduction of overall land use conflicts, wanting to make sure that anything that is proposed demonstrates how it's going to impact what's already there. And starting to build on a concentration of the residential, but residential development that has been, uh, growing out in that area to look at how this can become more of a complete concentrated rural community with some of the other, uh, commercial types of uses that would support the residents of the area. The core principle is to support development decisions moving forward, is ensuring that prioritizing impacts on water quality are, are utmost in the development decision, uh, increasing a mix of land uses to retain citizens. So as houses get older, uh, how are we going to ensure, or what types of uses would be necessary to create a, a more, uh, complete community that would attract people to not only stay there, but to move in there, uh, as well, if there are more of those types of services? And sustaining connections and access to the lake is, is some of the key guiding principles to support, uh, any decisions in the area. As part of the future land use, uh, component, there is a, an area that talks to the existing residential development that's there, but also the lands that are considered vacant, but already have an approval for residential uses. Looking at areas for public use and recreation, while there are minimal areas already there for light industrial or commercial, part of the policy direction for the plan itself looks to support those types of, of developments where, uh, where they can be demonstrated to minimize any impacts on adjacent uses in the environmental areas. And then the bulk of the, the lands within the plan area that aren't crowned are already zoned for agricultural use. So the, the sections within these areas provide different guidelines for the character of each of these land use areas and how decisions would be considered for anything moving forward. Bit of an illustration of the land use there, proposed, the, the focus on the vacant residential areas, and the focus there comes from direct, uh, direction from the municipal development plan. So as we talked about where there are lands that already have zoning in place for residential, those would be considered for new development opportunities, but we don't want to be looking at approvals or, or re-designating lands for residential until we have a better control of, of what's already out there in place. So that flows into the area structure plans as well, ensuring that as we start to think about residential development, that we focus first on infilling those areas that already have the approval in place before considering new opportunities. And the plan moves into the policy sections, uh, broken down into the overall general policies that ensure there are connections to other plans that are already in place, that the MD has, as well as the provincial authorities. Uh, growth management to ensure protection of, uh, the health of the lake, so as we consider any development decisions, ensuring that at the forefront of that is how that's going to do any potential impacts, uh, on the, the condition of the lake or the adjacent, uh, environmental areas. Looking at development opportunities to enhance the area as a, as a rural community, uh, not just a recreational residential area, and ensuring that any conversation around, uh, lake access or, or recreational opportunities balanced with the importance of environmental protection in the area. And the final section provides direction on administration of the plan, uh, and how the plan is going to be utilized, recognizing that the sequencing of any potential development is going to be driven by anybody, uh, the, the timing of any sequencing of development would be driven by, uh, any market conditions, and then ultimately whether or not that those applications could, um, be presented to planning and development in a way that would, uh, determine that a, a new development would be necessary in the area. And then ultimately, there's a five-year review that has been put into place to ensure that, that the plan is updated and that it is changed as the context changes, so that the, the MD isn't in a position to do a, an updated plan that hasn't been addressed since nineteen eighty-five, uh, that there's an opportunity that the planning and development department can go through these on a much more consistent basis as context changes in the area and as, uh, updates are warranted. So that concludes the presentation from administration. Are there any questions?
Councilor Fedeau?
Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Almer, could you explain to me how the summer villages come into play with our, with our, uh, with our A S P plan?
Essentially, they have boundaries around them, uh, we acknowledge their existence, uh, through the area structure plan, and recognize that, uh, any development in there ultimately is going to have some kind of influence on development adjacent and vice versa regardless of the boundaries. But ultimately, the, the area structure plan here, or anything that the summer village would create on their end, would have, uh, the area structure plan has no authority or influence on, on their decisions, nor does their municipal development plan have any authority on decisions you would make outside the boundary. So while there's an acknowledgement that they're there and they are part of the area, there's, there's nothing within the area structure plan itself that can have any sort of influence on what they do within the boundaries.
Awesome, uh, that's the answer I was looking for. I know that, that question's gonna be asked, so that's kinda why I'm, I'm asking it. Uh, I had a couple of concerns regards to that, saying that this is doing that, and I'm like, well, unfortunately, that's not in the MD, right? So, uh, and another question I had, I'm gonna ask you as well, is, uh, with the, uh, ER and MR guidelines, how is the, uh, this new plan addressing those?
Yeah, so with the plan itself being, um, it's a layer down from the municipal development plan, but still a layer up from what a land use bylaw or, or any more detailed regulations. But the, the direction that is provided within the area structure plan that puts a focus, uh, on prioritization on the protection of the lake, enhancement of the lake, now we start to use some of the other tools that the MD has in place, like the environmental policies in the MR and ER, to ensure that those tools are maximized to support the overarching goals of the area structure plan. So that, we don't wanna have duplications in, in all of the documents that you create. We wanna make reference to what are the high-level goals here, and then using the other tools to ensure that these goals are being met through how you're regulating the, the actual use of land.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we, we, we already, uh, we usually take time to, uh, read, uh, we had two written submissions, but we read them before this public hearing started, so we're gonna go on to the next part of our public hearing. So I have a list here, and it looks like two people would like to speak, so, uh, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone uh, in favor of speaking, uh, on bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. Okay, at this time, the second time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. That's a tough, I don't know how to answer that. Probably, probably.
It's just, I just want concerns raised.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Reeve, uh, suggest that she speak in opposition, not because she's in opposition, but concerns tend to be more, um, uh.
Okay, we'll, we'll put you in the next category then. Thank you for, all right, and for the third and final time, I'll ask if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. Okay, seeing no one, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. Audrey?
Thank you, gentlemen. Like I said, I'm neither opposed nor it, it really in favor of the, the area structure plan per se. Um, upon review of the plan, though, I do have a couple of concerns. The infrastructure and principal environmental integrity in the plan, and I quote from the plan, "While the result is not a physical infrastructure system, the nature of the scale of development in proximity to the lake requires multi-lot subdivisions to incorporate stormwater management into the development to ensure pre- and post-development runoff is managed and minimizing any impacts to the lake." My concern is environmental integrity as pertains to the infrastructure has, in my view, thorough objectives and policy. But my, my concern is implementation of the policy. We have seen significant change in the watershed behavior with the development of subdivisions around the lake. Drainage is not maintained by the stormwater flow routes that we are seeing saturation of soil and discharge into the lake at a greater rate than prior to the establishment of the said subdivisions. I do not know much more, how much more development the lake can sustain and the residences, because what happens? We've been there now through three cycles of the lake going up and down and wet and dry years. And what we're seeing is, now that the subdivisions have developed back of the lake, and they're substantial, we're seeing more runoff coming down to the front of the lake and into the lake. And that has ramifications not only for rainwater runoff and snow melt runoff, but also for what people put on their lawns and pesticides. So, what I'd like to know is, what are the parameters around stormwater collection for developers? And will there be ramifications if, in the event, they are not sufficient? And will there be enforcement? What about the impact that residential users have when it comes to clearing, to land clearing, herbicide use, and individual stormwater management? What is the plan for elaboration of policy and implementation of its intent? It is my opinion that all residential users in the catchment area of Moose Lake are contributing to its impacts on a day-to-day basis with their practices. Will there be enforcement of the policy? And has council given consideration or thought to conducting an economic impact study on Moose Lake? Now, I know that costs money, but it's a very interesting study and would give a lot of information to the council and to the whole community at large. It would give an idea of the economic impacts on the municipality and the adjoining town. How many users are from out of town, where do they access fuel, and how could spinoffs from usage to benefit the lake and the MD? I believe if we understood the significant impact, economic impact on Moose Lake, we would see the importance of maintaining this water body in its healthiest. And I just had a question about what direct control. On one of the slides where that shows the, um, land uses, and it has one area which is the newest development on the lake, um, uh, River Creek. That is under direct control, and I don't understand what that means, and there was no definitions given in the report. So any questions, gentlemen? Or any answers?
It's a public hearing, uh, but we can find that, uh, that last question, we can have someone talk to you before you leave, okay?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to ask, uh, if there's anyone else, uh, wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw eighteen sixty-eight. I have a Ted. Ted, do you wanna speak still?
No.
No? Okay, at this time, at, you know, for the second time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for taking my concerns about this. On this bylaw, my question will be quite simple. Has this anything to do with the Partners of Climate Program, the PCP? Is it being backed by this, the UN Agenda of Sustainability Initiatives? That's my concern and my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Okay, and for the third and final time, I'm wishing to speak, uh, is anyone wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight? Okay, at this time, would you wish to speak, the applicant wish to speak? And rebuttal of any of this?
Maybe just for clarification sake on the question specific to direct control, uh, that is a, uh, it's a, a way to use the land use bylaw in a way where planning and development works directly with, with council to approve a unique development that doesn't fit specifically within any of the existing land use districts. So if it doesn't fit specifically within a, a residential district, the way the regulations are set up, it's a bit, it's either a unique idea, a unique type of development, or it's on a unique site, then the applicant would work directly with administration and ultimately council, who is the, the ultimate approving authority on how to make, uh, the development either fit or, or not. So it, it doesn't, just having direct control doesn't mean you automatically do something if it doesn't fit within your bylaw, but it's if your bylaw doesn't allow for it, but it still is a development that you can make work, then it just goes under a, a bit of a different, unique type of category.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Fedeau.
Yeah, I just, I just asked that, uh, if there's still some questions, uh, from, from the audience, maybe to, uh, Ms. Audrey, to, uh, do a sidebar outside and, and just fill you in with, uh, the rest of it. It gets a little complicated, uh, even after me reading it for like hours and hours, it's, it's still clear as mud, so, but, uh, I'll definitely help you out with that.
Yeah, we have one more public hearing after this, so we could take a ten-minute recess after. So any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to close, uh, this public hearing. Thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making this motion that public hearing for item four point two be closed at ten twenty-eight AM. Any discussion, gentlemen? I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Before we begin with this public hearing for bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine Chicken Hill Area, Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan, I would like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of the council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, also the applicant, followed by questions of the adminis, administration from council. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wishes to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Administration, as the applicant, will be provided an opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in opposition of their application, followed by the questions of the applicant from council, only for information provided during the rebuttal. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Thank you, Counselor Fadiev, for making a motion that public hearing for the item 4.3 be opened at 10:30 a.m. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? That's Kerry, thank you. Now we'll start with administration's presentation.
Thank you again. So talk through the similar process, but for the Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan, again, this was part of the overall process the planning and development took to go through all of its plans, and Chicken Hill Lake and Moose Lake went forward once the municipal development plan had been adopted to ensure consistency and updates based on changes in both these areas. Objectives from Chicken Hill Lake perspective are largely the same, but given some of the unique components there with the recreational areas looked at, reflected some opportunities to promote the recreational areas at the lake, to provide additional opportunities within the camping area. So similar process engaged with the community, some of the key themes that came out, again, from the lake perspective, making sure that there are sustainable opportunities to access the lake, but not at the expense of the health of the lake itself, looking at the existing campground there as a key recreational area for, to attract tourists to the lake, but that the focus in the area itself is to keep it small, to keep it rural, and keep the focus on some of the recreational opportunities that are there already. Yeah, one more, there we go. So similarly, on the context side, looking at identifying and preserving the environmentally significant areas that are within the plan area, given the sensitive areas adjacent to the lake and ensuring that those are protected as part of the overall protection of the watershed itself and the quality of the lake. Similarly, from the municipal development plan, looking at the importance of agricultural context and the preservation of agricultural lands, acknowledging that there is agricultural lands within the area, but most of the soils are poor to very poor quality, and that there is not a significant opportunity for additional agricultural uses, though the ones that are already there in existing operations are to be protected and preserved to the extent possible. Looking at the land use, the existing land uses in the area, and other area where there is crown land surrounding the lake that the M.D. does not have any jurisdiction or authority of through this or other plans, the bulk of the areas are designated as agricultural uses, with a small area for residential up in the northeast section of the lake. This is another plan that is quite old, originally adopted in 1982, though contrary to what's happened in Moose Lake over that timeframe, there's been very minimal development in the area. Since 1982, very few houses have been built, and the subdivision that is there, already subdivided with residential use, has already been built out. There's no significant change to the context that's happened in the area, though there is space for incremental expansion of either the camping area or the residential area. So there are lands directly to the east of the existing subdivision that has been developed that has residential land use in place already, but it is not a significant area that would generate any major subdivisions. So building from both the previous priorities, as well as the updated direction that came through the community conversations, as well as the municipal development plan, the key aspirations for the update to the air structure plan are to preserve not only the agricultural uses, but the rural nature of the community itself, ensuring protection of the health of the lake and any adjacent environmental areas, and ensuring that there are sustainable recreation opportunities, but balancing the importance of recreation with the ultimate importance of protecting the health of the lake. Core principles around guiding decisions are to minimize impacts on the environmental areas for any new development, maintaining opportunities to access the lake, and balancing opportunities for any type of development with the, both access to the lake and protection of its quality. On the future land use side, the area is broken down into agricultural, residential, and the recreation area for the campground, and providing any type of guidelines for any development within those areas, but recognizing that the bulk of lands within the plan area itself are agricultural and intended to remain as agricultural. As discussed within the municipal development plan direction, where there is lands that do have existing residential zoning as part of it, there would be opportunity for minimal expansion in the Chicken Hill Lake area, but that there is no desire for any additional lands beyond what is already approved. The policy sections that are connected to the other sections of the plan, again, the general area that talks about the connections to other plans and policies and directions that the M.D. has in place, a policy area to ensure support of agriculture and the protection of environmental areas and the health and quality of the lake, ensuring complimentary recreational opportunities to the environmental integrity of the lake, and coordinating any new development with the environmentally significant areas to ensure that there is no impacts to the quality of the lake. And the final section, similarly, ensuring administration of the plan itself, and that the plan is reviewed and updated on a five-year interval to make sure that any changes in context are addressed through changes in policy, or to ensure that the plan remains relevant into the future and not having to do it on 20-year timeframes. That concludes the presentation on the Chicken Hill Lake Air Structure Plan. If there are any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Steph, for the door. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Fadiev?
Just for clarification, in regards to your summary future land use map, so anything that's crosshatched, people are looking at the map, that is crown land, and is that just being leased out right now to agriculture?
I'm not entirely sure on how the arrangement is, but it is crown land, and so if there are leases on there, that is through the crown.
Through lands or whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to announce that there was no written submissions that have been provided in the agenda package, so we're going to continue with this public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of bylaw Okay, at this time, for the second time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bylaw, number 1869. And for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of bylaw number 1869. Okay, seeing no one, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw number 1869. Okay, for the second time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw number 1869. And for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak, that wishes to oppose bylaw number 1869. I just looking for a motion to close public hearing. Okay, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion that public hearing for item 4.3 be closed at 10:40 a.m. Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry, thank you. All right, we'll take a five to... Okay, welcome back, we have a delegation for 10:30 at 10:54, I apologize on behalf of myself and council. Go ahead.
Awesome. Mr. Reeve, I'd like to present Eric Valwa from McElany, our consultant who has been working on our mountain biking, Nordic hiking trails, and all-season glamping design project. He's here to give council an update, to see where we're at, and see the direction we want to go from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name's Eric Valwa, civil engineer for McElany, and as Esther outlined there, we've been working on a mountain biking and all-seasons glamping component for Kennesaw Ridge. Oh, a little touchy. There we are. So we're going to kind of break it into three components today. The first one's going to be our trails component, second will be our glamping, and then the third one is an update to the business and destination management plan. That will be presented by Rod and Jim of Legacy Tourism, which is a subconsultant to ourselves, and they were the entity that did the original plan as well. So as part of this project, it was based off the original transportation, transportation management and destination master plan, and in that plan there, it highlighted some high-level areas that could be used for different trail components. As part of our project, we went further into looking at the topography and opportunities and constraints that presented itself, and we developed this map here with the administration to figure out what we could use and put where. You'll note that we have the glamping here, and then the lift access bike park. That was kind of the main component at the end of it, that was going to be further reviewed because the other components were outside the current lease of Alberta Parks, and also into Saskatchewan Provincial Parks as well to the east. So moving into the trails component of things, a concept, this was developed by our trails team, and then with the administration, we were moving into a detailed design where we actually went out into the field and laid everything out. So this has been to a detailed level. Right now, the final tender documents are being compiled, so this could be a shovel-ready project. As this project was put on hold for a while, that this is now just being put to a shovel-ready state. You'll note that we had a couple of components, number 10, that runs all the way around, is a hiking trail, and then throughout the middle there is all different levels of technical downhill mountain bike trails, with a couple lookout possibilities that might be expanded in the future. Then when we moved into the actual glamping component there, this part stayed as the concept, it didn't move past detailed design based off of direction from administration. So this is just north of the resort. We were looking at yurts and possible geodesic domes. The plan was to, if this was going to be developed, it would be an item that would be installed mostly by directional drill, so you're preserving the forest, everything would be centralized, I guess, around a central shower house, and then this one would have, ideally, you'd have power, water, gas, everything for each one of these units. But based off discussions with administration, that was not the direction, so we've left it at currently the concept state, so it hasn't moved forward since July of last year, with the primary focus being on the trail component. So where we're at right now, we've got the trails, and the next step forward on those would be getting approval from Alberta Parks to work within the current lease boundaries, and then if there was going to be expansions past the current lease boundaries, is securing those additional expansions, most notably the triangular piece to the north, that's the area that would be, I guess, most keen to get a hold of, because that is where the glamping would take place if it was going to be moved forward on. To the south, there's also possibilities to use it for pedal access, mountain biking, and then also to the west in French Bay, which now I believe is, has been expanded, the lease has been expanded to cover French Bay. The hiking was within the current lease boundary, and the Nordic skiing was one that was going to be pushed out because right now I believe it can be accessed and is being handled by a loop that is on the lake itself. The future use of the Nordic skiing on the Saskatchewan side is something that is far distant in the future and wasn't given priority. Glamping falls the same thing, where we're going to be looking at, we need to expand the lease, and then also go with Alberta Parks' approvals to actually do the work. So that's kind of the next steps that would have to take place to proceed with any of this, is the key focus there would be Alberta Parks, and then also maybe some First Nations consultations, because there is some heritage-sensitive areas along the lakeshore. Before we jump into the business destination management plan update, is there any questions about kind of the status of the glamping and the trails component?
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Crick?
I just didn't quite hear what you said, it was along the lakeshore.
Oh, the heritage-sensitive along the lakeshore?
Thank you.
Any other questions to this point? Yeah, Counselor Slitchev, go ahead.
I didn't see the hydrotherapy spa, that's...
Sorry, was that?
Any others serious questions? All right, thank you, continue.
Okay, so we'll move into business and destination management plan update, so I'll hand this over to Jim and Rod with Legacy.
Great. Can, first of all, can everybody hear me?
Can people hear me? Be just a little louder.
How's that? Can everybody hear me?
How's that? Can everybody hear me? No? Go a little louder.
Anybody hear me now?
Anybody hear me now?
You bet.
Great. Good morning. So I'm Rod Taylor, I'm the CEO of the Legacy Tourism Group, and if any of you were on council in March of 2022, Jim and I were actually in council chambers presenting the original report, and that original report was really based on, the recommendations, I should say, of the report were based on three observations, sort of empirical data results that came out of the research that we did, and the first one was the simple fact that the status quo for Kennesaw Ridge really wasn't working. It wasn't financially sustainable. The winter, it sort of eked by if there was enough snow, but the reality is, is that just like almost every relatively small ski hill in North America, most of those attractions have gone to a four-season model. In order to be able to be financially sustainable, they need to be able to make money from those fixed assets that are sitting there in the summer and not being used. The second piece of the problem, if you will, the challenge, was that the Crystal Turb, which is the adventure ropes course that was purchased, it was the right choice. It's actually the best of its class, it's nonlinear, it's got the greatest throughput, it's got the least maintenance cost, it's a great piece of kit, but the problem is because it is essentially there by itself in the summertime, it's what we refer to as a stranded asset, meaning there isn't enough critical mass of activities to be, to make a compelling case for somebody to want to go there, take an hour's drive for a day trip with their family, and go and experience Kennesaw Ridge in the summer. take an hours drive for a day, a day trip with their family and go and experience Kinnisou Ridge in the summertime. The third piece of the puzzle was that when we did a pretty extensive review of the competitive landscape within a one-hour, two-hour, three-hour, and four-hour drive radius, we found out that until you got to that four-hour radius and you were including Edmonton, which meant that Snow Valley was then part of the competitive set, at three, at a three-hour drive, it's pretty much a barren competitive landscape. That is to say, for any family that's living within a three-hour drive of Cold Lake, Kinnisou Ridge represents their best opportunity for a fun family adventure, whether that would be for a day or whether that would be for a weekend or a multi-day experience. So based on all of that stuff, we, that information, we then dug a little deeper into the demographics and we used a company called Environics that does something called Prism Data review, for lack of a better word, basically looking at the demographics of those radius. And what we found was that within a three-hour radius, age and income qualified people, there are about a quarter million people within a three-hour drive that potentially fit the profile of somebody that might come for a family vacation at Kinnisou Ridge. And so based on all of that information, we then went back and came up with a plan that essentially created that critical mass that I'm talking about to be able to attract enough people to make the thing financially sustainable. And at the end of the day, based on relatively conservative sales projections, and by that I'm talking about, you know, 30%, 25%, from our perspective, very, very low numbers, based on about an $11 million capital cost expense, by year five, there was an EBITDA just south of about $3 million. So on paper, it all worked. Where we are at today is having spoken with the current administration at Kinnisou Ridge is that there was the feeling that a $12 million expansion of Kinnisou is perhaps unreasonable. And so what we needed to do is we needed to take a look and review the options for a smaller, less capital intense opportunity there. That would still bring families in the summer, would still create enough critical mass to make it compelling enough for people to come, but wouldn't be a massive capital expenditure. So what you're going to see in a second, I think Eric has a slide, is we've developed a work plan paid for by McElhaney from the funds that have already been allocated to them for this project, so there's no additional cost to this. But basically what we would do is we would go back and we would evaluate three scenarios. We would take a look at the status quo right now, just to make sure that nothing has really changed and that in fact it is not, not sustainable. Maybe things have changed and it is, but we're going to find that out. The second thing that we're going to look at is if we were to do the original plan again, what has changed there? So obviously the capital costs have gone up, but so have the fees. Fee structures for for ski hills in particular, both in summer and winter, have gone up by about 30% across North America. So that alters what that EBITDA is going to look like, but we would take a look at that. And the third piece, and really the biggest piece of the work, is coming up with a new plan that would try to use the current assets that are there and not require a lot of capital to still make it a more compelling attraction, so that people would come for a day trip and possibly a multi-day trip. So what that means likely is a significant development of the French Bay campground. So we'll be turning that into a summer family waterfront. One of the things we know is there's a dearth of docking opportunities in Cold Lake. So it would be evaluating what a dock would look like there, what the cost would be, how many berths you would need, what would be the ultimate and the most effective number of berths, how that would then integrate in with this family waterfront idea. And then we would take a look at what are the, you know, two or three or four other activities that potentially could be added to Kinnisou Ridge itself that combined would mean that A, one of those families that represents the 35,000 people that live within one hour would want to come dock their boat, stay for the day, have those activities, or come from a farther distance and maybe stay in a yurt if the glamping units were actually created. And so ostensibly, that's what this next piece of work would be, to take a look at those three various options. And, you know, to give you an idea of the types of activities that we're talking about, these are like what we refer to as super ultra-friendly activities. So this is not, these are not going to be activities that require a lot of skills or are super athletic. It's things like a mini putt. It's like, it's the all-time winners where we know, we've got lots of experiences with them, that for, you know, $250,000, the return on that is massive. And we know it's a massive draw for families that have come dock their boat, they're spending the day at French Bay, and they want some other things to do. And so basically, right now, based on our discussions with the administration, that's what they've asked us, that's what they've asked us to do. And yeah, I guess we're looking to you guys to see if that, if that makes sense. Does that, does that rationale resonate with you?
Any questions to this point, gentlemen? No? Okay, continue.
Eric, do you want to just put up the work plan then, just so that it's, everybody can see it?
Oh, there it is. So this is a scope of work that was provided by Legacy, and this is kind of how the process would work if they were to move forward with looking at these different tiers, i.e. updating the original plan, keeping the current status quo, or kind of finding some sort of middle ground. This would be kind of the steps they would outline to go through.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, gentlemen?
That, that concludes the presentation of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, sir, and I apologize to all you guys again for being a little late on that.
It's all good.
All right, thank you. We need a motion to... Yeah. All right, thank you, Counsel Cravieak, for that motion to accept this delegation as information.
Mr. Chair, can you just provide clarity? Are you just wanting to accept this information, or are you wanting the recommended action?
I'll wait till it comes up before I... All right, thank you, Counsel Cravieak, for making this motion that council accepts presentation by Kenny Limited, provided an update on Kinnisou Ridge Resort Trails and Glamping Project as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring back options for proceeding with the project to the 2025 budget deliberations as discussed. All right, any discussion on this motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Crick?
Yeah, I just wondered if we should bring it to a committee of the whole, maybe the first one, committee hall in September. And then we can kind of discuss kind of where council's thinking to go, rather than having administration bring a bunch of proposals to budget if we're not, if we're not going to go ahead with them, or if we are, then we should kind of have an idea before we're trying to budget for something.
Through the Reeve, I actually agree. The sooner we could get direction from the administration side. As the Legacy Tourism gentleman had mentioned, there is, with us hitting pause on, on the design side, there is money available within the project to do this second review of our business destination management plan. However, we're not going to proceed with that until council gives us direction to do so. So if we could do it sooner than budget deliberations, I would very much appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree with that. Just so... Do you want to change the motion to bring it, just bring it, have a discussion at committee of the whole in September? Is that a friendly amendment?
Sorry, guys, I just lost a piece of paper, so... What did we discuss?
Mr. Reeve, to bring this to the committee of the whole for discussion.
So are... Are we going to add that on to the motion or just scrap, just add it on? Okay. So we're just waiting for them to add it on right now?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, you guys are good with these? Yeah, thanks. All right, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make my motion now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cravieak.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider 9.2.2 under Planning and Community Services.
All right, I have a motion by Counsel Cravieak. That council reconsiders the motion passed for item 2.2, adopting new policy number C-3C021 Municipal Scholarship Program Policy with revisions to Section 5B. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a recommendation now to go with option two.
Okay, I finally found my, finally found it, okay. So can we bring that up on the screen, please?
Mr. Reeve, Stephanie just let me know that we'll actually have to rescind the first motion in order to make a second, the new motion.
Okay.
So at first, we'll have to do a rescinding motion.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to rescind.
I'll make a motion to rescind.
Okay, we'll wait for it to come up on the screen. That's probably my fault again, Mike. I've been, I'm almost struck out already today. I can't even find my, Josh handed me an old one and I'm trying to select it. Didn't make too much sense to me. It was a good effort, though. I really got confused there for a second. Okay, go ahead, Josh, he's got a question.
Yes, this is through the Reeve to Counsel Cravieak, just wondering what your, what your intentions are with changing the motion here.
Oh, well, I just thought $2,000 is not very much money. It takes a lot of money to go through one of those fields, like I have experience with that, and so does, I think, Counsel Fadayo as well, so we need to increase the amount of funding to make this, you know, viable, more viable. You want to add to that, Counsel Fadayo?
Yes, you know, as we've seen, you know, like everything, and everything has gone to, through the roof for cause of cost of housing and everything else. And yeah, the 2,000 bucks years ago is not what it used to be now. And just the cost of, just students doing business, students is, is gone. It's ridiculous.
I believe with us doing this, that we're, that's why we send it, that after discussion is there because we're investing in our own community, that our kids, they'll come back and just live in our community. Hopefully have big families and expand our community. So yeah, that's not enough, that 2,000 wasn't. The 2,000 was not sufficient for that kind of request.
Yeah, they cannot get a, apply for other funding, though. Other, there's lots of scholarships out there.
I think we made your motion too soon. All right.
This is more discussion?
I'll make this motion first and then we can have some discussion. Let's read it first. See you, guys. Look okay to you, gentlemen? Everybody? Okay, we have a motion, you guys all read it. Anyone have any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counsel Fadayo.
I think a couple of us were kind of sitting on the fence, thinking about it, waiting for somebody else to make the motion to change the 2,000, and which never happened. But I mean, I just kind of want to just get you guys to think about what we spent on our, on our candy budget for July 1st. So I mean, we've spent more money than we are looking at a, at a grant program. And if we're, if we're encouraging cavities, we should encourage having indentists out here to support, support that as well.
So it's a make-work program.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Reeve, I just thought of this after the motion was made, and it just wasn't enough $2,000, so bringing it back, thank you.
So do we have to make his motion again?
Through the Reeve, there is, will be a new motion that Counsel Cravieak will be presenting. And as it stands right now, looking at option two in the recommended actions are the potential options. We did add a little bit to it as per our discussion. We did add a little bit to it as per our discussion. So it'll actually read now that council adopts the new policy number C-3C dot 021 Municipal Scholarship Program Policy, amended to require the successful applicants to commit to a one-year agreement to practice in the region upon completion of their program and to reflect the scholarship levels and values of $7,000, $10,000, and $14,000 as presented in option two. Does that sound accurate, Counselor?
Okay, so Mr. Reeve, that'll be my motion, if that's okay with counsel.
Okay, we'll wait for it to pop up on the screen and then we'll go from there. These motions seem to be getting longer and longer. But I have to agree with Counsel Faddeh, I think when we were all thinking about that, I think we all had that running through our minds and you're absolutely right that it wasn't enough, so I'm glad Counsel Kraviev brought it up. You guys should be thankful that I'm not typing the motion because we could be here for like an hour per motion, so...
I can recall in grade 10 at Lion River, took typing 10 on an old Remington typewriter.
Yep.
I used to make 74 words a minute, I used to beat all the ladies in a...
Yeah, sure, Mike.
Yeah, that's a true story.
Most guys took typing to in junior high or high school because there's a lot of chicks in the typing class, so that's why guys took typing, so tell the truth.
I took typing in grade seven to begin with, Mr. Anthony, and then in grade 10, yeah, at Lion River School.
Okay, you're gonna have to prove it after the meeting. Here we are, move by Counsel Kraviev. Thank you, Counsel Kraviev, that council adopts new policy number C-3C-021 Municipal Scholarship Program Policy with revisions to require the successful applicant to commit to a one-year agreement to practice in the region upon completion of their program and to reflect the scholarship levels and values of $7,000, $10,000, and $14,000 as presented in option two. Any discussion, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor...sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick.
Okay, so this is...they can apply for this every year, a student, for one of those amounts, is that correct?
Through the Reeve, that is correct.
Okay, and then for every year that they receive it, they have...they commit to a year of service in the community?
That is correct.
In that field?
However, the way the policy is worded, there is a preference given to those who are new applicants, so there is that built in a little bit.
That's a good thing, I think. And then, is there matching funds from the NADC for this?
Through the Reeve, not through this option. If we would have went with option three, which was to register and apply to become a business... or sorry, a bursary partnership program participant with NADC, then NADC does match these values.
So is there a big cost for us for becoming a bursary partner with them?
Through the Reeve, there is no cost per se. It's the only option...the reason why we didn't recommend this option was more so so we can control the flow of the process and the requirements of the program, other than relying on their parameters only.
All right, any other discussion, gentlemen? Okay, I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Great job, everybody. I believe we're at 9.3, is that correct, everybody? So 9.3.1, Range Road 440, sounds like a Dodge. There we go.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'm here with an RFD for Canadian Natural Resources Limited, Range Road 440 Development. Canadian Natural Resources has submitted to the MD a letter of intent for the development of Range Road 440 south of secondary highway 659, and that's on Appendix A. An aerial map has also been attached for reference on Appendix B. The development request is for 800 meters of Range Road 440 directly south of secondary highway 659 to the entrance of a heavy oil well site. As Canadian Natural Resources is committed to pay the total cost of the development of Range Road 440, administration has approved the development as per policy 4A.001 Road Construction and Development Policy, Section 11A, B, and C, and notifying council as per Section 12 of the same policy. There's no cost to the MD and communication is going to be via the MD Council minutes on the website and its administration's recommended action that council accepts Canadian Natural Resources Limited Range Road 440 Development Report as information.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselors Slipchak for making this motion, that council accepts Canadian National Resource Limited Range Road 440 Development Report as information. Any discussion, gentlemen, on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto 9.3.2.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. This one is Gear Energy Range Road 452 Upgrade. Gear Energy has submitted to the MD a letter of intent for the development of Range Road 452 north of Township Road 640, and that's in Appendix A. An aerial photo is attached as Appendix B. The development request is for 1.6 kilometers of Range Road 452 directly north of Township Road 640 to provide access to a heavy oil well site. As Gear Energy has committed to pay the total cost of the development of Range Road 452, administration has approved this development as per policy 4A.001 Road Construction Development Policy, Section 11A, B, and C, and notifying council as per Section 12 of the same policy. There is no cost to the MD and the communication is going to be via the MD Council minutes on the MD website and its administration's recommendation that council accepts Gear Energy Range Road 452 Upgrade Report as information.
Thank you. Excuse me, just looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes, Deputy Reeve Crick? All right, thank you Deputy Reeve Crick for making the motion that council accepts Gear Energy Range Road 452 Upgrades Report as information. Any discussion, gentlemen, on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Sorry about that, Josh. That's carried, thank you. Onto 9.3.3, Dust Control 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. We have the 2024 Dust Control Program Update. The deadline for residents to submit their request for dust control has passed on March 31st. However, administration has accepted requests after this date. A final list of dust controls has been created based on these requests. As per council-approved policy 4A.018 Dust Control Program Policy, Section 1D, administration is presenting for council information the 2024 List of Dust Control Locations. The list in Appendix A includes dust controls provided by the MD as well as industry-supplied dust controls. A map of the locations is attached on Appendix B. The locations mentioned in the attachments have been determined through the dust control request forms submitted by local residents, discussions with industry and infrastructure services staff recommendations. All locations are inspected to determine the need for dust control and are actioned as required and as budget allows. Any further requests for dust control in 2024 will be actioned based on logistics and budget. Cost and source of funding, dust control has been allocated in the council-approved 2024 operational budget. Communication is discussions with residents requesting dust control, which have been ongoing, and locations of dust control will be communicated through council minutes posted on the MD website. And administration's recommendation that council accepts the 2024 Dust Control Program Report as information.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, Counsel Faddeh?
Just a question before a motion goes ahead. In your Appendix A, is that just for...is there like...does each ward get like a notification for dust controls? Because I just know it's just for...through all the other...
Sorry, through the Reeve, I don't understand your question.
Yes, all the notifications that you have on here for dust control.
That's from CNRL, though, right?
For CNRL, it's just in Ward 4?
No, the...sorry, the first page of Appendix A is the ones that the MD is doing, so TNU. Page number two is CNRL, dust controls, and page number three is the ones that Caltech's industry is responsible for.
So there's nowhere else that CNRL is putting dust control on?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, all...the majority of their operations are in here and then if there's any other requests for dust control in that...in other wards, I don't know about them. And this is based on industry's year-after-year program.
So if a resident had an issue, would a road that's run by...or actually maintained by industry, they're contact industry first and then us second, or how does that work?
Through the Reeve, Counsel Faddeh, if it is an MD road, we have agreements for CNRL to maintain it, but if it is an MD road, they would contact the MD first. We would then contact our contacts at CNRL and they work...we work very well with them. If there's an issue, they'll address it as quickly as possible. So if there are any other areas where CNRL has not indicated on these maps then...or on these lists, then we would be reaching out to them and getting that done. It's part of the road use agreement for them to control dust, so it wouldn't be a surprise to them when we come to them and say, there's an issue here.
So what do we...yeah, what if we have like another industry that's involved, say gravel hauling and it's based on the province hauling and creating issues, same way, they get ahold of you and...
Through the Reeve, yes. Any issues, any concerns for dust control will come straight through Infrastructure Services and we will handle that from...and deal with whoever the user is, whether that's a trucking company, a gravel hauling industry, logging, the province, whatever it is, we'll discuss it with them.
Okay, sounds good, yeah, thank you. Just have...there's a couple of gravel pits that are in the ward and there's some...yeah. So I just wanted to figure that out or unless I can get an update from you on the, I guess, the condition of the road.
Yeah, if there is, we'll definitely look into that and address it as necessary.
Okay, sounds good, thanks for that.
All right, thank you, yeah, Counsel Kraviev, then Counsel Slipchak.
Through the Reeve to Mr. Vespolco, there's an error in my ward there on the map. If you go to Range Road 492 and Township 630, there's a dust control one mile north of Township 630, if you go to the map. It should be one mile south of Township 632. That was done yesterday.
Through the Reeve, Counsel Kraviev, what number is that on the list? Maybe the map got marked wrong, but I just want to make sure that it's...because it may...if it's on the...
But there's a number, 1 through 20, which one is that? 31? I don't have a 31.
So that's the correct location, then?
Okay. Okay. That's on the CNRL list there? Okay. Donnie, would you like to confirm all the other locations in Ward 4?
I got a que...what's these letters mean beside the words?
You got that like JJCC like?
Completed?
Is that the month? No, it can't be the month.
I believe, Mr. Reeve, that's the...that's the foreman that's in charge of that particular...
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yes. Calvin? Yeah.
You call me.
Call Mr. Vespolco. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I'm looking for a motion then, gentlemen. All right, thank you, Counsel Kraviev, for this motion that council accepts the 2024 Dust Control Program Report as information. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and just an FYI, the dust controls are going on right now. They should be finished up either... I think by the end of this week, all of the dust control will be finished up.
There's a whack of trucks in La Coria lined up there, so, yeah, they must be going hard. We're moving on to 9.3.4, Sale of Waste.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Administration has received an inquiry to provide...or sorry, to purchase waste aggregate from the Riverhurst gravel pit. This gravel pit has been depleted of all usable aggregate and the MD has no future plans to mine at this location. The material wishing to be purchased is not useful in MD operations and will be used or buried during the reclamation of the Riverhurst gravel pit. As this material has no operational value to the MD, the aggregate can be sold to generate revenue to offset the cost of reclamation of the gravel pit in the future. With the option of aggregate sale open to the public, this will postpone the plan for reclamation of this pit. Administration will need to develop a procedure for the accounting of the volume of aggregates sold and the billing of... sorry, the aggregate...the volume of aggregates sold and the billing for the sale. Administration will also need to investigate industry pricing to determine a rate for the aggregate and that it is added to the master rates bylaw for council to approve. And just note that this proposal does not include the sale of any aggregate that the MD has in inventory. There's no costing to the MD for this and it's a potential revenue generator. Communication strategy upon approval of the sale of aggregate by council, this will be communicated through...to the public through the MD website. And it's administration's recommendation that council approves the sale of waste aggregate to the public and furthermore, the council directs administration to draft an amendment to the MD Master Rates Bylaw establishing a fee for the sale of waste aggregate and bring it back to a future meeting of council for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or emotion?
So this aggregate, what is it, pit run?
Through the Reeve to all of council, no, it's like a bedding sand. It's a fine sand that we really don't need for our operations. Yeah, it's for us, it's a waste material.
How much volume do you think there is there to be sold or more or less?
I don't know the total volume for the Reeve. I don't know the total volume. Their request came in, I think they're looking for about 15,000 or 20,000 ton.
Okay.
Uh, for right now, you know, um, could be more, could be less, I'm, I'm not sure, but, uh.
Okay.
That was what the request was.
So what would this type of aggregate, just for information, be used for, for what industry, like landscaping or compaction?
Uh, through the reef, I would suspect that it would be for compaction, for bedding, uh, bedding of pipes, uh, bedding of, uh, uh, septic tanks, like something like that. It, it's more of a, a finer material for bedding, so that would be my guess as to what it'd be used for.
Okay, so how are we gonna inform the public that we got this material for purchase?
Through the reef, we, I would work with communications and we would, uh, post something on the website that, uh, uh, you know, something is available. We might have a sample of what it is at the, at the shop so that somebody can come and look at it and say, yeah, no, that's not what I want. Or yes, that is what I want. Um, there's logistics that we would definitely have to figure out, uh, how to do it. Do we have a loader there? When do we have, do we let people self-fill? Uh, there's a lot of logistics in this, but, uh, but right now it just, it's, it's whether council has the appetite to move forward with doing this or, or not.
So it's like a big pile of screenings, almost.
It, yeah. Yeah.
Right, thank you.
How much per ton? How much per ton?
Uh, through the reef, we would, we would look and see what industry is charging. We would be comparable to that. Um, I, but off the top of my head, I don't know what that, that particular aggregate would go for right now.
Yeah, uh, Counsel Fedeav?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion for, uh, option number one. Also, we should take in consideration what kind of, uh, our output is on that. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll do that. Do we need a loader there? Are they gonna provide a loader and all that kind of stuff? I'm sure you got that figured out, but option number one is, uh, is my motion.
All right, thank you, uh, Counsel Fedeav, for making this motion. That council approves the sale waste aggregate to public. And furthermore, that councils or administration to draft the amendment to the M D master rates bylaw, establishing a fee for the sale of waste aggregate and bring back to a future meeting for council's consideration. Any discussion on this motion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, administration will work on a policy and bring that back to a committee of the whole meeting, uh, with all the details in it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
On to nine point three point five, I believe.
Mine's in regards to Aurora Borealis, uh, Industry Park, Industrial Park. Uh, currently there's a large commercial building going up. They're having a lot of issues with, uh, regulations and fire suppression and, uh, available, availability of water. And I know this is gonna give us a black eye and going forward, because, uh, there's already rumors going around how hard it is to build there without having water acceptable and more so the water than the sewer. And I believe, I'd like to see if we did, is there something we could do maybe to show? Cause but for us to go forward with water and sewer, we're, you're looking at two years down the road yet, even if we decide it right now probably. But I'd like to see if there's maybe something, way we can look at if there's some, uh, trickle system we could use going from the M D plant that way or so that potential builders could see that we are looking at something and, and committed to going forward and improve, and, uh, improving the water situation that's currently, uh, going on out there. And, uh, I'd like to have a discussion on this and see if we have the appetite to maybe study or do a study on exist, uh, extending that line from the M D shop.
So, so can we bring that to the next, um, committee of the whole kind of thing to discuss? With that, Mr. Hogan, is that an idea or what do you think?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So if council wanted to make a decision, uh, you'd have to make it at a, at a regular or a special meeting of council. The committee of the whole meeting would just be put off to a future council meeting after the committee of the whole. I'm not quite sure, uh, we can do anything that council would like regarding, uh, regarding infrastructure. It would just, uh, what budget is gonna come out of, what's it gonna cost? Uh, I couldn't begin to tell you right now to do a study on taking the four inch line from the shop, uh, to the airport and turning it into a trickle system. Uh, we'd have to do some, we'd have to, I'd have to get some quotes on what that might cost us to do the actual study and then bring that back, uh, at probably at, at the next council meeting, uh, at the end of August. I don't have the numbers in front of me as to what the Cherry Grove water study cost. Uh, I think it was in the vicinity of, maybe, maybe somebody remembers what, what that was, but.
I think, I think it was around sixty thousand and that was, uh, because they did a lot of work, like a lot of legwork already. But I, I think this one here is, uh, yeah, it's definitely need to move forward on this one. I mean, we're gonna, we're looking at possibly expanding our lots and selling them. So I think that's just a viable option to have that out there, so.
I, I would suggest to council that if you want to go ahead with the engineering and, uh, and, uh, provide us with a budget to do that. My only, my only, uh, uh, I guess, my only caution would be if we're gonna spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars on engineering, is council prepared to make a commitment to move forward on actually doing something with the study? Otherwise, it's just sixty thousand spent on engineering.
Well, I can't speak for rest council, but I'm, I'm committed to go forward and, cause we're talking about economic development and moving forward. We can't, uh, wait for people to come and say, well, do you have this or that if they wanna, if they wanna build here? We gotta have the in place because they're not gonna wait, they'll just go to the next community to, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, Donnie, but I'd just like to have a lot more information before just, just saying to go ahead with the study. That's, that's all. I don't know. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel, uh.
Yeah, I know, I know what the, uh, the province is, is definitely looking at, uh, at, at airports as a, uh, economic driver as well. It's not just roads or whatever else. So having, having what we have going on is, uh, is pretty crucial. Uh, also, uh, I, we know that the province always looks at giving them numbers. So if we ask for something, they'll say, well, you know, how much is it gonna cost? And if we come, what they're saying, we don't know the cost, I think that's, that's, uh, you know, they just kick the can down the road. Where if you come up some costs and we just may throw some feelers out there as far as if the province would at all.
Help out?
Entertain putting money into it. We seen them, you know, uh, throw money into St. Paul. Uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, Red Deer has a, you know, got a lot of money from them. And I think we should just, uh, keep, keep going that way, so for sure.
Were, weren't we talking to the government about some of the regulations to maybe calm them down a little bit? Where, where has that got or, or haven't got anywhere yet?
So, uh, through the reef to council, so, uh, Reeve Kalinsky and myself met with the, uh, with our local M L A, with Emily Seer, uh, probably about four weeks ago now, four, maybe five weeks ago. Uh, and we had a talk directly to him regarding, uh, the regulations and the impact, not just on the M D of Bonneville, but the impact on all rural municipalities. This will impact rural economic development, uh, buildings that are over some, I don't know the exact number today, but somewhere over six thousand square feet. Um, if they're, if they're built as, as a wood frame building, require fire suppression. Most rural areas don't have, um, don't have a direct supply of pressured water or treated water. As a result, they're either pulling it out of wells or they're using dugouts. And that, uh, that quite costs, uh, um, prohibitive for most developers. It's either that or move into a steel building. And I know the local fellows that were building this particular building, I believe the number was eight to nine hundred thousand extra. The steel building was gonna cost them, so no matter, uh, which way we go, there's an additional cost. I would also, to put a plug in for our own economic development department, and, uh, this won't be new to council, I've, I've said this before. Our, uh, tax rate, uh, in our, for small businesses in our industrial parks is, is roughly eleven as a mill rate. The towns is roughly eleven as a mill rate and they provide full services, uh, inside the town. So the question the developer would ask themselves is why would I build in the M D when I can get a full service lot inside the town and pay roughly the same amount of taxes? They, uh, there will be, obviously the lot in town probably costs some more, but that may be offset by the price of the building because you have to do all of this other work, um, uh, that you don't have to do, uh, in, on a town lot. So it is, it's, I think there's a long-term tax strategy question for council as well as the infrastructure itself.
But I guess you can add to that, if you're building by the airport, there's a reason you're building by the airport as well. There's no airport right in the town of Bonneville. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Slipchak.
Yeah, so I, I, I'd like us to go forward with the study, I like, cause, uh, then this way we'll find out if there's a possibility that if we could do something with that four inch line from the M D shop on at a lower cost, it gives us some leeway, some time to discuss that budget on water and sewer system out to the airport. And like you mentioned, like, well, there's a reason they built at the airport. Well, lots of shops there are built there just as industrial, that it's not for the airport access. But I've been hearing from a couple of acquaintances past week that they were looking at building. And they, they said, well, they're gonna build in Bonneville because tax rate is same and they get water and sewer. So there's a lot of things we're getting, uh, affected by here. And I, I'd like us to go forward as to study and see if there is an option to this trickle system, if we can use for a developer that wants to build a bigger shop.
Yeah, but to, to spend sixty to a hundred and seven thousand dollars on a study, is there any way we can do it in-house cheaper to figure that out? Or is that like, it just seems like a lot of money to figure out a trickle system?
Uh, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would, uh, I would defer to, uh, um, uh, our transfer, our infrastructure department for that question. But I would suggest that, uh, um, these are highly engineered projects. So when you're starting to dig holes in the ground and putting pipe in the ground and then to determine volumes and flows through a four inch line and then into trickle systems, I, I, I think that probably likely has to go, uh.
A little higher up.
I, I think it has to go a little higher up, yes.
Yeah, Counsel Fedeav?
Uh, yeah, I think we should just, uh, I'd like to see some sort of plenary, uh, study done, not, not involving a big cost. Uh, I know that, uh, the county, just trying to think of where they're in M D, but Black Labyish, uh, are doing a lot of infrastructure with lines throughout their whole, throughout their whole county. And, uh, when I just passed by there just, uh, two days ago, they're all using two plus inch line. They're not using four going throughout all their, uh, lake lots and everything else. And I'd love to see what kind of system that they're using and maybe, uh, maybe share some ideas if they could do that. Just to give us an idea saying, could the four inch, would there, like, would it suffice to give services to the airport or not? And if it's not, then we know it's gonna cost us big money because now we're looking at a ten inch line coming all the way from the town of Bonneville all the way there. So it's just something that we got to just lease across that bridge.
Yeah, cause a trickle system needs a lot of systems behind it, because it needs holding and air, like it just doesn't, uh, it's not the same as you're having a ten inch pressure line to hook up to.
For sure, and most of those, uh, places do have tanks ready, so that's where a trickle system comes in.
Right.
Comes in place and then when somebody is building on in the future, they know that, okay, I'll, I'll need a storage tank to, to hold it because it's based on a trickle system, right? So, but at least there's water.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Potential then I would offer to council, uh, some, i- if we receive direction from council to, to reach out to, uh, our, the engineering firms that we work with, to provide us with, uh, a quote and a scope of what the study would be. We could certainly bring it back to the next meeting of council at the end of August as to what those studies would cost and then, and then proceed from there.
I think that's pretty fair.
I'm just guessing right now, so.
Yeah, we're all guessing. It's, like I said, we need a little bit more information. You wanna say something?
I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't wanna spend money today on this, it just came up here like this morning. We had no time to think about it or anything. It's, if we're gonna get a, get an estimate though, then, then we actually have something to think about.
All right, do we need a motion for that or just a direction?
Uh, yes, Mr. Reeve, I'd prefer a motion directing administration to, uh, receive estimates for, uh, a study for a water trickle, um, system, to, uh, to the airport and to the Aurora Borealis subdivision.
Are you okay with that, Donnie?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, but also not just a trickle system. Is there, like, I'd like to question us, is there a system where it's, we got a four inch line, you say, to M D park? To the M D shop, is there a system where we could just use a line that will allow for, uh, fire? Like just using that line tied into the fire system and with a lift pump or something, that's all. But I'd like to see us reach out and go forward.
Through the reef, uh, I would just suggest that the, the study would, would, um, encompass all of that. Fire flows, uh, uh, whatever the, the use is going to be. Um, instead of trying to get it all included in a motion, just to have it as, uh, the, you know, a, uh, water supply feasibility study to Aurora Borealis, I would just leave it at that and then that will encompass all of it, uh, if I could make that suggestion.
That sounds, I, I read that, that looks good. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, Counsel Slipchak, is this motion acceptable for you? All right, thank you, Counsel Slipchak, for making this motion. That council refers to Aurora Borealis subdivisions discussion back to administration for additional information regarding the cost for completing a feasibility study for making water services available for the subdivision and to bring back, and to bring it back to the next meeting of council for further discussion. Any other discussion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Crick?
Just a question through the reef, through administration. Is, is there a cost to this other than a few hours of staff time to kind of get these estimates for us?
To reach out to the, uh, engineering firm, through the reef, uh, to come to Deputy Reeve Crick, uh, there is, uh, a slight administrative cost to reaching out and, uh, kind of explaining to, uh, our different engineering firms what we would want, but it would be pretty minimal. We're probably talking in several hundred dollars, uh, as opposed to thousands of dollars.
Any other questions or discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please. That's carried. Thank you. Al, are we keeping the meeting going or what?
Lunch has not arrived yet, so I would suggest.
Just keep truckin'.
Probably if we do the next one and then lunch will probably be here by then.
All right, we're going on to, uh, nine point four point one, seniors, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This proposal is regarding the seniors transportation grant program. In the past years, the M D seniors transportation grant program has been managed by the Bonneville and District F C S S with funding provided by the municipality. Administration is proposing that this grant program be managed in-house effective immediately. Attached is an updated draft of policy number C dash one zero zero five, seniors transportation grant policy with revisions to reflect the M D's management of the program for council's consideration. I would add that that grant policy that's in front of you is virtually, uh, identical to the one that was rescinded six or eight months ago. The revisions are just to pull the F C S S names and titles out of it and to, uh, focus it on the municipality. Over the years, M D council has allocated a portion of money towards a program to assist seniors in attending medical related appointments and procedures outside of the M D boundaries. In two thousand twenty-four, the M D council has allocated fifty thousand towards the seniors transportation grant. In the past, this grant was managed by the Bonneville and District F C S S and payments were made to the applicants through the F C S S. Recently, there have been changes to the Bonneville and District F C S S and administration believes the program may be better served through in-house management. Managing, managing this program in-house will lessen the red tape for applicants by allowing M D staff to directly provide the service and council have direct access to policy and governance control of the allocated funds. Attached for council's reviews, appendix A, the draft policy, and appendix B, the draft revised grant application form. The costs and source of funding, there's been fifty thousand approved by council in the two thousand twenty-four operating budget. Uh, communications will advertise the change in both print and digital media. Press releases will begin immediately upon council approval of a new policy. Our recommended action is the council approves transitioning the management of the municipal seniors transportation grant program from the Bonneville and District Family and Community Support Services, F C S S, to M D administration. And further, the council adopts new policy number C dash one zero zero five, M D seniors transportation grant policy as presented to be effective on August first, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Counsel Fedeav, and then Counsel Cravack. Are you guys both making a motion?
No.
No? Okay, go ahead.
Just, just a question. Uh, so, so in regards to wards five and six are serviced by the F C S S in Coal Lake. And I know there, there was a in and out from, I think, Bonneville, that they took the application from Coal Lake F C S S. I'm not sure how that is. I just don't want wards five and six to be missed through, uh, this change.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the reef to council, it would be my recommendation that the entire grant be managed in-house.
Throughout the MD.
Throughout the MD.
Sorry, Mike, I cut you off there.
That's okay. Thank you. This is the first time. Just kidding. Anyway, we did pass in the FCSS meeting in, with the town of Bonneville, to increase the mileage to thirty cents instead of twenty, and that's under policy number one B. Mileage paid for a trip of at least one fifty clicks shall be reimbursed at a rate of thirty cents per kilometer. So we did pass that before, so I'd like to make that amendment, and then the rest is the same, so I'd like to make a motion to, to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, if I could just, sorry, was that, you said thirty-five cents a kilometer?
Thirty.
Thirty? Okay, thank you.
Welcome, three zero.
Yes, Counselor Slipchak.
So I got a question. So that fifty thousand never was forwarded to the FCSS at all? So we still in full control of it? Okay. Well, I know from past also that I've had lots of calls, guys, people saying, three months and they're not getting nothing and not hearing back, so I believe we could do, administration is great here, so I know they could do a good job of it.
And, and council understands what our, our program internally will be. Our reception staff at the front, they will handle the incoming applicants. Ms. Bartlett will be the approver, as per the policy, and then it will go straight to the finance, and I, I don't imagine, I imagine that when we receive, we're probably a thirty-day window in terms of the actual payments and the, and the checks being written. I, I don't see this being dragged out for two and three months. Now, obviously, the policy does require that the applicant submit their, their request in thirty days from the date of the travel. So that's, so any delay would, at that point, be on the applicant and not on staff, but if it happens inside the thirty days, they'll be paid inside thirty days.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Yes, Counselor Fadiev.
Yeah, as long as we get the, get the communication out to FCSS Coal Lake of the changes, so this way they're aware of, and they can direct people this way, is much appreciated. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, thank you, Mr. Kravjak, for making this motion. That council approves transitioning the management of the municipal seniors transportation grant program from the Bonneville and District and Family and Community Support Services, FCSS, to the MD administration, and furthermore, that council adopts a new policy number C one zero zero five, MD seniors and transportation grant program policy with the following revisions to section one B, increasing the mileage reimbursement to thirty cents per kilometer to be effective on August first, two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried, and then we're gonna break for lunch.